I don't have my watch.
Good morning, progress.
Twenty second. All right, good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Atchison County Commission meeting for Tuesday, August twenty second. I had to call the meeting to order. Want to wait about five minutes for Father John and then. I know last.
Couple maybe.
Okay, just give him a couple of minutes and see. All right, I'm going to use a prayer for elected leadership if you guys would join with the invocation. Oh, God, give us spring, strong, wise, compassionate leaders. Send us leaders with truthful hearts and impassioned spirits who will stand for justice and freedom for all. Give us leaders who will unite with other leaders to bring about a kinder, more peaceful world. Leaders who will support their coworkers during times of challenge and change. Give us leaders who are servants of the people. Listening, encouraging, caring for all races, creeds, and cultures, welcoming those seeking asylum. Providing a safe place for all to thrive. Amen.
Amen.
Hey, please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment. Do we have public comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
God is she. He's one of the commissioners and attorney.
Now, I'd like for you guys to read the last paragraph.
Thank you so much.
Fixer.
Walnut Township was looking for a new trustee. The meeting in July was told that it would run for ten days. That there says final rest receipts of applications Friday, the eleventh. One person turned one in the fourteenth. And this was accepted. I don't know what the exception was for that one to be accepted. When the deadline was Friday, you put it on there. That's the law. Why was his accepted on the fourteenth?
Well, there's no requirement that they, uh. This isn't a statutory deadline or anything.
But that says the eleventh.
You're right, that they said.
I mean, June first is a deadline to run for commissioners or whatever.
And then one sentence in to an answer, you cut me off and say.
I'll let you talk.
I'm not worthy of giving a response to you.
I acknowledge, I appreciate you.
The the response is that the commission was trying to do the best they could to get qualified applicants to apply. And they we did, they did set a deadline. Uh, however. The minutes of the meetings had not been uh completed and approved. And so the only people that would have been aware. That they had talked about it would be people who would watch the meetings. And that's because we had some maybe administrative delays in getting minutes done from those meetings, getting the minutes on the county website. So even the people that are subscribed to that and who read them every week wouldn't have known about the application process. Because we were slow. And so the the easiest way to fix that. Was to treat that as a pretty soft deadline because it's not a deadline that's required by statute. Or required really at all. Uh, I think maybe we'll change. Our internal policies on how we, how they word that. Uh, to to make it clear that it's not a hard and fast deadline, but that's the answer.
Uh, well, that's that's still wasn't right. That's the deadline. That's the way it was. If you run it for office, June first, I come in three days later and put my name in, it kicked out.
No, that's a statute. It's a state statute.
Well, I mean, that's the same thing. It's a statute as far as I'm concerned. You put it in there. That was it. Other, the other two people that put their names in, they had them in, they knew when it was due. I mean, that's. That's illiterate on the other person for not getting his in. He knew about it. So I'm just saying, that's that ain't right.
Our goal is basically to get them all turned in before our meeting. Was he hasn't said it.
And the extension made online or anything about it was still open, so. All I got to say.
Well, I don't think it's fair. That you are not. It's not fair for people that met the deadline. To get disqualified by somebody that turned in their stuff later. That's just don't sound right. It almost has something to do with like unfair labor practices or something. You can't make a definitive response to something and then say. Well, we're gonna extend it, but nobody else knows. I know some people that said, man, I was gonna put my name in there, but dogged, I missed the deadline. If you're gonna make exceptions for one, you gotta do it for everybody. Or the way it should have been posted was just open until filled. Instead of putting a definitive timeline on anything, it's just open until filled.
I was thrilled we had three people put their names in, you know, depends on these townships. It's like. Everybody's kind of twisting arms to get somebody.
Well, that's why you have to be careful with how you word things, you know? Because there there's a definitive line that says if you come in after five o'clock on this day, you're disqualified yourself.
I I can tell you when I was on the city commission for thirteen years, we had this happen all the time, and we still took their name. You know, you put something out there and say there's an opening on this board or this panel or whatever. That we always the the, but their name in the hat. It was never been dealt with one by the by the meeting, so. So. As far as president, I've seen that, and I'm gonna say twenty-five times. I mean, a lot. So it's not uncommon.
Not uncommon for Atchison County?
Like, in general, everybody wants to get volunteered.
That was City of Atchison that you're speaking of.
Yeah. There's no difference. I mean.
Well, evidently rules are being made to be broken then.
Hmm, well, we did not know who any of the three were, so if you're insinuating that, we knew that. The third one in, the final one was in, that's held by the clerk. We have no idea who's turning it in. It could have been any of the three that was turned in later too. We would not have known. When we made that decision, we had no idea. Who had turned in, we've told, we're told that we had three that were brought in, so. I hadn't been in the contact with anybody that would have known. That and I I know they, until that morning, uh, we uh. Were oh, to open them. Was the first time would I knew that we had three. And had no idea who they were or when they turned theirs in, so it's. There is a separation to maybe what you're seeing it is that we knew that that one, who who that was late and. I guess I know who that is, but uh, we had no idea who that was.
So if one person would have just submitted, if what we would be doing right now, would we be still looking for two or three more or would we have just appointed that person? Um, one person made the deadline, nobody else, what what will we have done?
Well, I probably accepted that purse.
So we had two that turned them in and.
We had three turn.
Yep, or two turns them in on the deadline.
In a timely manner.
Timely matter. Well, why did we accept the third?
So is this, you you can't enter into a race after it's over. This is about fairness. And we want everything fair. There's a net for here to disqualify that person because you don't want that person on. Let's be honest. And what I want.
I tell you, the play that he showed toward the members of township last night was for, I I didn't, I don't want to deal with it.
It was rude.
It was.
Okay, it was very. So I do not want my tax money paying that dude to do what he wants to do. I'm not scared to say that because he was rude.
And he had his finger in my face all night long, just so you know, because I was the only girl up there. And that's the way I will put it.
Well, why don't we uh, uh, just refuse all three and have a new submission time?
I'm good with that. That's the fair way to do it. And to cover yourself. To say, open until.
I wouldn't put a time on it.
Open until so.
Till fill, till fill. But that way it gives you guys time to look.
Well, if there are those others out there that wanted to do it and didn't do it because they had heard of this timeline, that would. So we might have more, but I I don't know. That's my idea. I don't know what the other two commissioners think of that idea or path.
I think that's the fair way.
Yeah, I you know, it really wouldn't hurt things for them because they don't have another meeting scheduled until September eighteenth, I think, so.
Yeah, it's gonna have to.
You know, if you put it out two or three weeks, I don't think it should make a difference to to that, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Right, now a couple of weeks start next meeting, in two weeks.
Yeah. Um, I just want to share based on being at your meeting last night, witnessing everything, hearing everything. Um, I knew that we were making a recommendation today. Um, I have received phone calls from several people in Walnut Township over the past week, um, and it was. A hundred percent in favor of Mr. Service.
That's hearsay.
Um, no, it's.
It's hearsay. You can't prove to nobody that people called you.
Um, I had many phone calls.
That's hearsay, you know.
Well.
Never run in the courtroom.
It's on my.
She's telling you something that's a personal fact that she's observed.
And I, how do I know that?
No, I don't know that you have to know it, but you're.
Then it's hearsay to me.
Well. You 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 may treat it that way, but you're questioning.
So anyways, I I felt like for cur- courtesy last night when we were all together, like. I didn't have to sleep on it. I didn't have to not know where it was based on the feedback all week of a hundred percent of the. People calling, texting, so reaching out to me. That they want to Mr. Service, so I brought the board and the three candidates over because I felt like that face to face, in person, honest, like. This is gonna be the recommendation based on Walnut Township feedback of citizens. You know, and I wanted you guys to know that. I'm fine with whatever we feel is fair extending it, and those people just need to show up in person. Because. If, you know, the feedback that I've gotten. Well, I'm 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 just saying, if you're not, if you think I'm lying to you about the feedback.
I've never seen.
This person was, I've never seen him twenty years at a meeting.
I've never seen him in my life until last night.
So, you know, um, when you say show up, are you meaning show up at the regular meeting, so?
Well, I'm asking like how they call us.
Maybe step ups, that's a way to put it.
Step up.
Yeah.
I I and maybe send us an email with with how they, I mean, I don't know, but I.
I I.
As commissioners, we solicit feedback all, we get feedback all the time.
Question case. In our township rules book we got, there was a form in there that when somebody resigned, the the board could recommend somebody. As far as I know, I signed the paper, he signed it for Vince. To recommend Vince. Did that just get disregarded or?
No, it's it's attached to the letter.
Okay.
Yeah, we read it in our meeting. That that was your.
There's been three or four meetings since Leo's quit. Uh, and you know, and all these people, I've seen none of them there. So if I'm not looking at them, I don't know if they're, what they're doing, because you know, they can't make a recommendation on somebody that, you know. Did they see the way he acted last night? No, if it wasn't fair. You know, he acted just like Leo was acting. I I me, 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 I, I, I. Then stand up and tell me that, well, you're operating it without outside of the law and you're doing this and you're doing that, but you're selling on the rocks. Well, two wrongs don't make a right. I, that's an ethical issue. He proved to everybody else in there last night that he's unethical.
Great.
I was trustee for twenty years. Last night he brought up inventory list. I was never given an inventory list. I didn't know about transfer and give an inventory list. There's pieces of equipment that we're still trying to receive. And then brought up, but you have inventory. I said, no, I don't have an inventory, but I know one of them there because I bought it. And. Out of the twenty years that I was a co- uh trustee, I probably had four people come to our meetings and they knew where they was at. And I never had one person said I did a bad job. They said the road was the best they've ever been. And they they said you need to get back in there because the last two years our roads went to shit. And so, I mean, but I don't want the job no more. I had twenty years of it. That's enough. I'm sixty-eight years old. I don't want to deal with it no more. But what I'm getting at is the third person that came in and done that. I mean, when he brought it to the court out and turned his name in, he should have said you missed the deadline. That's, that's my, my opinion. I mean, when you miss a deadline, you miss a deadline. Now, if I'm doing construction work, I miss a deadline, they find me every day until that job is completed. So, I mean, that that is wrong, that his name was even put in. You had two people that were qualified, as far as I'm concerned, in there, and it should have been closed that night. I mean.
I'm moving extended deadline to September fifth's meeting to be submitted before the meeting. And that meeting is at one o'clock on the fifth. It's an afternoon meeting.
Up until the the gavel strikes that morning, so if someone comes in that morning, we'll accept.
I I say so.
The way that guy acted last night at that meeting. Shouldn't be a trustee. Period. He was blaming everybody on this point, fingers at everybody, and he had no clue what was going on.
So it's been moved to extend the Walnut Township trustee appointment. To September fifth at one P M. Any interested parties up until that date and time may still submit their name for consideration.
So you kind of work.
Yes.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Um, I just have discussion right there. Yes, you said one o'clock. I thought that was the time for department heads from one to two, and I thought the meeting was just six. I'm just trying to get some clarification because that's what I have pulled up on my agenda here.
Thanks for keeping us in line.
Yes, yeah, I I didn't catch it. That was her old meeting time, by the way, so that's the reason that one o'clock came up.
Sorry, I know we have an R and R hearing that, uh, that evening, so that's why I was like, it's a.
So they're two o'clock, two.
Oh, is that the?
That's the day we're doing that, yeah, so we're doing the.
So it's at what? It's a, you know, I forgot about the R and R here, so that's not even a regular meeting.
Right, it's regular meeting from one to two, workshop to two to.
Two to six, that's what I have.
Yeah, all right. See, I was even off.
On my, yeah, on my agenda, that's why I'm trying to clarify it. Ooh, not one, because one is your greatest work.
Got a job keeping them.
So, so, so correct.
So what, actually, we need to clear here.
Okay, so the Board of County Commissioners is required to appoint the elector of Walnut Township to serve as trustee for the township. Letters of interest should be submitted to the Atchison County Clerk. The commission will consider the letters during the regular meeting set for September fifth, twenty twenty-three. An appointment will be at two P M. in the Emergency Operations Center at one zero four four three U S Highway fifty-nine, Atchison, Kansas. The commission previously solicited letters of interest. Due to confusion over the deadline for submission of the letters, the commission has decided to extend the deadline until the position is filled. So I have a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero.
I have no more questions.
Yes, great.
He brought up fact last night, that when no trustee is on board, township cannot do nothing. So that means you don't blaze the roads, you don't put a rock on the roads, and you get people calling. There are roads out there. That need fixed up big time. So who gives the authority to let, these two should be able to act as a trustee together to take care of the roads.
I, I don't think you should take your legal advice from that meeting. So, uh, the statutes are pretty clear that, um, a majority of the board controls. Uh, during the board has exercised at a meeting and through a vote. Controls the majority of the board from hire and fire and all of those things, so.
Thank you very much.
And I got an updated copy of the township book, so I'll email it to you guys, so you have. Because the version we had, like, I had was seventeen, but there's a nineteen version, so I'll send it to you.
When do you update it? I think I have twenty. I think mine's just twenty-two.
If there's a viewer, I could.
And that's not updated by us, that's sent by Kansas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, all right. Thank you for coming.
Thank you guys. Feedback. Approval of minutes. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve, as written.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye passes three to zero. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Reven?
Um, head economic development advisory group last week, it was pretty good, uh. There's a lot going on. That group's doing a great job distributing smart money to economic development and also to equity loans and. So there's a lot of activity. It's good.
I have no update.
Okay, um, I was just gonna update that I attended the Walnut Township meeting last night. Um, and I have heard from many, many citizens in Walnut Township over the past week. Um, I hope my fellow commissioners have, um, so just reiterating if, um, you have. A position or thought in your township, uh, please let us know or come to our meeting September fifth at two o'clock, please.
I would like to echo that. I had several calls, um. A couple in-person situations where I ran into somebody and, uh. I don't know a number off the top of my head, but I was. Substantial number of people very interested in. Uh, seeing appointments on that position, so.
I had calls also, um. And. I, I don't like that. Some of the tones that's going on, both, you know, it's influx, uh, uh, I just want to say that. And something like this, transparency is always the cleanser, as they say, that, uh, when you shine the light on whatever. It it will prove or disprove, uh, anything accusations that are being made, so I mean, I think that in interest that the the more open that. Uh, uh, an entity is, it shows, uh, that. Decisions are being made, made correctly or incorrectly, uh, and I'm not saying anything about what's going on because I don't know, but. When you hear these things as a commissioner, you. You you try to, uh, keep your. Uh, mind, if we don't have jurisdiction of them, only in the thing of appointing someone. And so we want to do our do our due diligence on that act, and I hope the, um. Township Board, uh. Takes it, uh, that advice, so.
Thanks, I have a question.
Yeah.
And I'll put you on the spot. Um, I know we have the authority to appoint someone. But what would be involved in this special election to fill out a term that's unexpired?
You know, I don't know that you can, uh.
I was, yeah.
The, uh, well, in general, it's, this is part of just the the general. Law regarding resignations, that is the resignation still by, uh. And if it's a partisan election, it's still by the governor. Uh, if it's both. Nonpartisan, if it's a city election, vacancy is still by the board, the city's governing body. And by statute, it's a township, this is the way that it is done, to a point.
It's curious, yeah.
I, you know, I I guess somebody could do a recall, um, which would.
First already designed.
Um, yeah, um. I I don't know, I don't think there is one to.
Okay.
To put it to a, to a vote, and.
But one person asked me about, why can't we just have another election? And I said. Well, it's only for a year, basically, and you know, then there's an election anyway, so.
It's a good question.
Yeah, then you'd have a position vacant for a year, and that's probably not a good idea either.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's what our appointment is temporary. It only, they fill that. The unexpired term. Of that position, so in this case, it'd just be what, a little over a year, be a year or three months?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I have a purchase order, um, looking for a motion for approval from Joint Communications to Motorola Motorola Solution. Um, for three thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-six cents. Uh, this is for a radio for the Walnut Fire, Walnut Township Fire, they added to their fleet, so.
Absolutely.
And this is a sales tax.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Um, okay, EMS Commission Report for July twenty twenty-three, do I have a motion to file as received?
So, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye passes three to zero. Um, Walnut Township Board trustee appointment has been rescheduled for September fifth at two P M. Idle civil rights plan approval. Um, Jody from H R had, uh, updated this. With her contact information, sent us a copy for a review last week. And or I guess earlier this week, do I have a motion to allow the chair to sign most current, um, civil rights plan for Kansas. Adjutant generals department federal grant sub recent briefs for Atchison County.
Also moved, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye passes three to zero. You have in addition to the agenda. I'm sorry, I'm. Joe Snyder had sent us. Sorry, I got pulled back up. Here we go. Okay, this is for twenty twenty-three asphalt pavement patching program, project plan preparation, contract documents, and bidding services. Um, to Pfeffer Corn Engineering and Environmental L L C, um. And this is a proposal for engineering services from them. Doing plans and contract documents eighty-four hundred, bidding and contract management services sixty-eight hundred. Project inspection and documentation, one hundred and twenty hours of sixty dollars, or seventy-two hundred.
Do I have a motion to, well, I can't.
This is, I've got questions before we.
Yes.
Increase supporting. Increase of what he's gonna do.
Yes, uh, and that's what I was wondering, I've not seen the document, because it.
Sorry.
Went from like a hundred and eighty thousand to two hundred and something.
Yeah, one eighty, so this is just an increase from a hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. To approximately two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, it was from, uh, August twenty-first at two oh seven.
Yeah, you're, yeah, we've already seen that, that's.
Yeah.
We already approved that, just we see they approved the increase in, uh, the total.
Uh, this is, uh, due to, uh, increased area expansion of, of, uh, the area covered.
As you can.
Yes, alright.
Sorry, I couldn't, I didn't have the email pulled up in front of me, I just had this.
Yeah, so what the, the, it says, really, it's just getting more road repair completed before winter.
Okay, do I have a motion, uh, to approve the engineer's cost estimate, um, as presented?
The increase, I'll make that motion, second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass this three to zero.
I should have mentioned earlier, we made executive session, attorney-client for twenty minutes.
Okay, we can do that now if you want.
Uh, just a little discussion on the same subject, um. That, that he, Joe's also suggesting that we apply for the fall cost share for Ottawa Road. That if we accepted, uh, if we were gonna spend, uh, try to do a mile next year. If we're accepted into the, uh, cost share, we could possibly get two miles done for the price of that of one.
Yeah.
So, I wanted to have a little discussion, I mean, to me, it seems like a, a no-brainer that we would, uh, uh, apply for that. And.
Uh, I do need. Probably to do, so if we could do that for years in a row, that's huge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then do two for the price of one.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, I don't think there needs to be a formal vote on that, does it, Pat? I mean, we just, just that way, if he contacts us, that he is, he would encourage him to apply for the fall cost share, okay?
Yeah, and if you're watching our meeting and live, um, along Ottawa Road, and would like to do a letter of support, um, we're gonna put a template out there. And start getting, uh, support letters to put with our application, so.
So today, the road crews out there doing chip and silver, just that they gone.
Yep.
From fifty-nine to two sixty-second.
Yep.
On Ottawa, so that's gonna help that part. Yes, this will be further south than what we do next year on this. Eventually, we'll get it all fixed.
All right. Okay, so, let's see, well, uh, any unfinished business? Anybody else?
Where are we on the H R manual? Personal manual, we approved that?
Not yet.
Okay, you got, it got put off, so. Need to have that on our next agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
Attorney Counselor.
Um, I don't have anything.
The broker from your village.
Uh, we're, we're still missing the, uh, one piece of data, um, on historical census. And, uh, well, I should have that any day, but, uh, he would be, he will be available. Give a presentation, okay. And also, he had asked me if, uh, at any time there had ever been a. An appraisal, uh, of the facility, and didn't think that they rely on that at all, that, uh, frequently they documents. And things about the condition of the property, I'm not aware of any formal appraisals that were ever done on that property. But if anybody is, let me know, so we can try to find it.
I'm not aware of it.
Uh, wrote, uh, Roger Denton in G I S, they had a, a number of historical. Documents like the original blueprints and things for the building, and, and we have those, and we supply. Those, and I guess that's the appraiser's office that has. All that data, and we, we have packed into that, but, you know, I wasn't aware of a formal appraisal, and I always wanted to request that he's made.
Executive session.
Okay, uh, can you give me the parameters again?
Uh, just to be attorney-client, um, the, I've had three of us.
Okay, twenty minutes.
And if Marcus, so, so on, he's like.
He is not on.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's what I thought, I, I was, yeah.
I will move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session at ten thirty-five. Uh, A M for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship. Is allowed by K S A seventy-five dash four three one nine B two. And that the purpose of the closed session is to protect the confidentiality of the discussion, and that the board come out of executive session in twenty minutes. In the E O C one zero four four three U S Highway fifty-nine, and those present will be the three commissioners and Pat Anderson, County Council.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pass this three to.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Approval of the expenses, has everyone had a chance to take a look at them, do I have a motion to approve, uh, this week's expenses?
Sure move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pass this three to zero. Uh, any other public comment? If not, I would look for a motion to adjourn into a budget workshop, um. Until one o'clock, and then we'll come back in.
So moved, second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pass three to zero, we will adjourn into a budget workshop, not adjourn, reset into a budget work. Hey, we are back in, um. On Zoom at one o'clock, um, after Budget Workshop, and, uh, looking to adjourn back into a budget workshop. Um, for a little bit more time this afternoon, do I have a motion to adjourn into Budget Workshop?
Sure move, second.
Hey, it's been moved in seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I pass this three to zero.